And you guys, Cindy's with us, okay?
Yes.
Ready to go? Okay, so I will now call our special meeting of the Temple City City Council, June 29th, 2020, to order, again pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing. Members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. Okay, so just a reminder to those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment, and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Okay, so Madam Clerk, if you will call roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Maynard.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Here. Okay, we will now move on to Item 3, Public Comment. I will first begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests.
Okay, and if we have those who are calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. Are there any speakers online? I don't hear anyone, so I will now close public comments. We will now move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, the adoption of Resolution Number 20-5482, adopting the statement of investment policy for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Do you have any comment on that or motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent calendar.
A second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to Item Number 5. It's our public hearings. We have several of them this evening. We will start with A, Adoption of Resolution Number 20-5480, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And Mr. Cook, will you start that off?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. By state law, there is an appropriations limit that is required for cities to both calculate and be with under. Ms. Pagaras does it herself, and can answer any questions that you may have, but we are under that limit as we have consistently been. And so this is one element that we have to approve as part of your overall consideration of the this coming fiscal budget. That concludes my report unless you have any questions of Ms. Pagaras.
All right, well, I will start with Councilmember Mann. Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Actually, I do have a question, more of a curiosity question for Mr. Cook. I mean, we're, while I understand the appropriation limited the purpose of that, but what about cities that have similar sort of population, how did it get, and then they have a higher dollar budget, how did it get around doing that?
That is a good question, and I can let Susan answer where I'm feeling missing some gaps, but generally, the idea behind this was around the Prop 13, Prop 8 period of time, where they wanted to ensure that there was a mechanism to kind of, one, control spending, but also control local taxation. So there are specific exemptions that are allowed for under the appropriations limit that are excluded and included. So some cities kind of nudge right up to the top of that and are allowed to kind of be within that framework, but that's the general overall idea of the appropriations limit, unless I'm, Susan, unless I'm missing anything.
No, that's correct. One item they look at is the capital projects that the city budgets for. I used to work for an agency where they received a lot of sales tax, but at the same time, they also budgeted for a lot of capital improvement projects, which lowered their subjected limit. So even though they received all this sales tax, they spent it for capital improvement projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now open up a public hearing. City clerk, could you please let us know if there are any public comment emails that have come in on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and you can go ahead and unmute the microphones. Is there anybody from the public on the line who would wish to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. We will now move on to final council questions. Councilmember Mann?
No, no questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Sternquist?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
No questions.
Thank you. I have no questions either, so I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 205480, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 20 to 21.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to Item B, the adoption of Resolution 20-5481, approving the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Mr. Cook?
Mayor, and Chavez, the members of the council, before you, is the master fee and fine schedule for the city that includes the annual adjustments and two new fees as well. There's no other request of staff related to the master fee and fine schedule. We do this every year to affirm what that fee and fine schedule is for the city going forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will start with council questions. Mayor Protem Yu, any questions for staff at this time?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
No questions.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mann, I mean, yeah, Councilmember Mann, I'm sorry.
I just, I remember, I think it was last year or maybe two years ago, we had essentially ramped up the fees for engineering and planning to 100%. We've already hit that point, right? So there's no further increases. The only increase is CPI going forward.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I just had one question. Is there, is there a fine for the illegal use of fireworks in this master plan somewhere?
Yes, it is. I looked it up today.
Where is that?
I have to pull it.
Age 19, maybe? 18? I'm looking at many.
You'll see, and you'll see multiple fines for different, including safe and sane versus illegal. The ones that primarily issue out are not for safe and sane, but for the illegal fireworks, which are $1,000 for the first offense, $2,500 for the second offense in a 12-month period, and $5,000 for a third offense within a 12-month period.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Cindy.
I think it would be important to clarify that a violation of safe and sane would be when someone is doing them after 10 o'clock or what, Brian, is using them?
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, let me clarify that. Yes, that would be for using safe and sane fireworks outside the permitted hours.
Thank you.
Or dates.
Or dates, yes. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, these violations can be added one on top of each other, right? I mean, so even though the first offense made a $1,000, but they could be in violation of multiple city ordinances.
That's correct.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think any of our fines are exclusive of others. It depends on, obviously, the facts, and I'm assuming that violation of, one act could be a violation of numerous different sections, certainly. Yeah. Okay, I will then go ahead and open up our public hearing. Ask the city clerk if there are any email requests on this matter.
Mayor, there are no email requests.
Okay, now I'll ask you to unmute the microphones. Are there any ones who are out there on the phone, wish to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain any final council questions or comments. I'll start with Councilmember Mann.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist? We didn't hear that.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Yu?
I think, Mr. Mayor, like Councilmember Mann had said before, this is only adjusting upwards according to the Consumer Price Index, so it's appropriate. It's only 1.9% difference from before. So, yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, and I concur. So at this time, I will entertain a council motion.
Mayor Chavez, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 20-5481, approving the master fee and fine schedule for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think we have a second by Councilmember Viscara. Any objection? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move on to our next public hearing. That is Item C, the fiscal year 2020, 2021, proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. So, City Manager Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. So I will give a brief introduction, and then Ms. Pagaras, you're the administrative services director for the city, the CFO of the city, if you would, if you please, will give a presentation. First, thank you to all of you, the city council. Thank you to all the staff, and thank you to Susan and her entire team for working on where we've gotten to today. It has been a big effort amongst staff, looking to find a way to pull together a budget that still provides services to the community in a manner that you're expecting and the community is expecting. Thank you for the council for being so fiscally responsible and conservative in the sense, so we are in a place today where we are having to make adjustments, and they are not painless adjustments, but they are adjustments that are not as dramatic and with layoffs and those types of very tough decisions some other agencies are having to make around LA County. So thank you to all of you collectively for what you've done, and collectively, you're in, we are in the place today because of all those efforts. As discussed in prior study session and the council meeting, the event of COVID-19 has created a really amazing challenge to provide services. We have now a recession that has technically started in February of 2020. I was not the finance director in the 2008 crisis, but I worked for, was your interim finance director at one time, Julia James, and I thought, 2008 crisis, I'll never see anything like this in my career again. Well, guess again, we're here, and it's incredibly steep and dramatic. The budget presents to you a maintenance of, level of services to the community, and dealing with what your key priorities have been expressed as: safety, safe recreation, and investment in community infrastructure, be it streets, parks, and other key amenities. I need to make a couple clarifications on the budget, and one of them is my fault, so I need to apologize for that. But first, on the Las Tunas budget, you'll see that the capital, the capital improvement budget actually has two line items for this year, fiscal year 1920s, Las Tunas budget that had zero expenditures. We will clean that up as part of the budget, because as you know, we expedited as quickly as we could part of the Las Tunas project, which was from Sultana to Musketal, and we will be under about $600,000 for that completely. So the 4.6 million that's carried over, we will be able to complete the rest of Las Tunas from Baldwin to Sultana with that total amount, but we'll make that adjustment in the final budget. The other issue that I neglected to bring up to the council before, and I apologize for that, is last year, the school district provided a reimbursement for a portion of the costs related to crossing guards. And the reason why we asked them for that is because one of the funding sources that we have, the Traffic Mitigation Fund, was eventually running out, and will next, after, not this year, but the following year, will run out of funds. Last year, they contributed $11,500. We're going to ask them to do that and more this year on top of that. We, I did receive communication from the school district. They are running, at least, and this is in their public documents, about a $5 million operating deficit right now, and stated that they would not be able to make that contribution. So I apologize. I did not mention that as part of my budget presentations. We did not budget for that as a reimbursement in the budgets that you have seen prior, so, but we, that should have, that should have been something that was noted to you. Lastly, on.
Before you, before you make, move on for that so that I don't lose my place, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So, so, did we receive last year's $11,500?
Yes.
Okay. But this year, they were going to pay, they should have, or they called for a payment of $23,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's what they're saying, they can't pay, none of that, zero, basically, right?
They can't, they can't make, they're saying that they can't, because of their budget situation, they will not be able to make that reimbursement this year.
I'm not really sure how this works, but is this like a voluntary thing, then? We were just basically accepting their money if they felt they could pay for it, or if they didn't, then they would say, well, sorry, but we can't pay for it. I don't quite understand how that works.
That's a great question, and I was going through, this afternoon, I was going through some of my notes, and there's not an agreement between the agencies. It is literally an ask, not, not, not a binding contract or agreement between the agencies.
Well, that, to me, that would seem to maybe, for want of a better term, be more of, I guess, an oversight on our part, that perhaps, rather than to rely on their good nature or goodwill, we should reduce these things to some type of writing so that we can at least be in the discussion as part of their budget, rather than just for them to say, well, there's nothing that binds us to this, so we're just not going to even offer anything. I, I mean, I understand that they have a deficit, but so do a lot of other people, and, you know, we're kind of back to square one after going round and round on this issue. And we went, if I recall, when we first started this issue, we went many, many years, I think, basically subsidizing this without any money from them at all.
Yes, sir. That would be my fault for that.
Well, I'm not trying to place the blame on anybody at this point, but I'm just saying, maybe, again, another lesson learned that, you know, even, even in dealing with, you know, the school district, these things should at least, I guess, just to protect us and to protect not only us, but we're dealing with public dollars, so we're really talking about monies that are going from the public, because the school district has decided on their own not to contribute any money towards this. Cindy, you have something you wanted to say?
Yes. I think my biggest concern is when I asked Brian about this today, is that I didn't see it in the budget, and I must have missed it in the draft, but we had some very lengthy and heartfelt discussions on this, and I think at the time, my biggest concern was that we were already expending almost $90,000 to the school district, and I can't recall what the funds are, but these funds will go away, last year, they would have gone, they will go away after another year. So after another year, we will continue to pay, if we continue in this process, we will continue to pay the $90,000. The idea was that, I think there were some councilmembers who were concerned about the amount of money that we were spending for crossing guards. And after those discussions, it was decided, and, I mean, I thought, well, we did decide that we would reduce the amount by the $11,000 whatever each year until we got to the fourth year, where then we were just going to pay what was, I believe, $60-some thousand. Brian, you would probably know the figures exactly, about $60,000. So at the time that we would be paying this $60,000, none of us had a, you know, heartburn with that amount as much as we did the $90,000. In three years, we're not going to have these funds to give, we're going to have to dip into our general fund to pay that. That is my concern, but what I'm most concerned about is something happened in the process where, you know, if you're keeping books, and maybe Susan can help with that, and you see something that's supposed to take place over the next two years, that's what I'm concerned about, is how, how did that fall through the cracks? Because that should have just been moved over. When council made a decision to do this for the next three years, I don't know if it was in communicating, obviously, that seemed to be part of it to the school district, because we didn't have anything in writing, and it was more of a verbal agreement. I never thought it was going to be a verbal agreement, and I don't know how many other councilmembers thought that we were just going to go on a handshake and a smile. So I think those are my main concerns, that because this process didn't move forward the way that I felt we had agreed upon as a capital, it's now, instead of just costing us what would be $11,200 or $11,300, we're paying the total amount. And in two more years, we're going to be faced with this whole thing again after we already got the school board's buy-in. I mean, we have a new school board, and so I think I'm pretty concerned about this issue, because $30-some, $20-some thousand is a lot of money.
Okay, and I agree, but I think point's well taken. Of course, none of us had any way of estimating that, of course, everything that's been going on the last few months would have happened. I'm assuming that but for COVID and all the economic issues that it has caused, I would trust the school board would have lived up to its promises to pay this money. But, you know, it is what it is. So I think moving forward, however, as we always have said in the past, you know, we need to learn from, from, you know, what we've done, and then, you know, do differently, or do things that, of course, that will protect the city and the residents and businesses that we serve. So, okay, so.
Tom, if I could share, I mean, under the circumstances and knowing that we have the money that to not have the reimbursement, because it was already placed in the budget, I don't have such a, you know, a problem with that under the current circumstances. I just think we're going to be challenged when we get to the end of the next two years, and we're going to have to look for funding to bring that $33,000 back into the budget that we would never have had to do in year four.
Well, no question about that. Perhaps, perhaps staff can continue to work with school district and see if there's a possibility of maybe in the future negotiating something, you know, as we move forward. So I'm sure staff has heard that, heard that message, and we'll look into that as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so go ahead. Mr. Cook, you were in the middle, and we rudely interrupted you, but.
No, no, not at all.
We've got nowhere else to go tonight, so we're with you.
Well, me too. Lastly, Sister Cities. So with the COVID-19 pandemic, actually, based on a council inquiry, I contacted Steve and Nancy Terry today, and they confirmed that they will not be having any students go, come from Australia or go to Australia during the course of this coming fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2021. What they have said is for those who interviewed that were anticipating to go this year, they would be going in fiscal year 21, 22. So there'll be no reimbursable expenses from the Sister Cities program, according to Steve and Nancy Terry, for this fiscal year, but there will be for the following fiscal year. So that money is budgeted right now for this fiscal year for $11,000. It is the council's prerogative if they wish to remove that, since there'll be, but again, just to let you know, there'll be no reimbursable expenses that the program administrator, volunteer program folks, Mr. and Mrs. Terry, are anticipating.
Mr. Cook, maybe you can, you can let, I know you sent out an email earlier, but maybe remind the council of how we do pay Sister City. It's more of a end-of-the-year type of reimbursement, just on an upfront payment.
Right, so that, thank you, Mayor Chavez. So for the costs that were incurred last summer, we just received that invoice from the Terry. So they incur, the Sister Cities Association incurred all their costs to the course of the year, and then at the end of the fiscal year, they asked for that reimbursement. So just a few weeks ago, we got the invoice for last summer's, summer of 2019's expenses.
And that's covered. So basically, we're even with Sister City right now.
Yes.
And I guess, I guess, from what I, I guess what I'm hearing is that really, there's no expenditure anticipated for this coming fiscal year. So therefore, to have it in the budget as if we were going to be using it, really would not, it's not going to be used. So I guess our decision is, do we just leave it there, or do we just simply remove it out of the budget, since it's not going to be used anyway? And then, of course, that will be used presumably for other things, and then, of course, in next year's budget, we would then again anticipate a discussion in that, for that as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is anybody okay with that, or any questions about that? I think that might be physically, fiscally, the sound thing to do, I think, from a standpoint, and again, it's not going to be any, it's not going to hinder the Sister City program or affect it in any way that I can see. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Last two. So as we've stated before during the study session, our quarterly reports going forward are going to be not simply the receive and file reports anymore. There, you can, I can strongly predict that the next quarterly report, we will probably be asking you for some additional direction, based on hopefully not too much of an adjustment on the revenue side for, related to COVID-19, because we will see that fourth quarter revenue for this fiscal year, even though we are still anticipating a surplus going in, but the trends may dictate otherwise going forward for the rest of the fiscal year. So, and those, and those financial implications, we still are understanding that data is still coming in to understand. Right now, it's merely forecasting, getting our best. forecasting, getting our best efforts. Um I've been on the last week or so, um there's been a little bit more confidence from the prognosticators and the forecasters of where things are going. Um and with that, I will turn it over to Susan for a brief presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, um Peggy, would you let me share the screen?
Peggy holds a lot of power, huh? She doesn't wanna let you do that, she's not gonna do it, I guess. Peggy, is Peggy still there?
She's there.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Our behind the scene.
Can't hear or see her, but I know she's there, okay, we've got it.
Okay. So, um let me start off with that, the city's budget is an important document that helps us plan for this coming year. Um we use the budget to balance, you know, our available resources with our community needs and as determined by the, of course, the city council. It also serves as a tool for communicating the city's financial strategies and for ensuring accountability. Um this fiscal year, um twenty twenty-one, um proposed budget focused on, as Mr. Cook mentioned, on maintaining our financial stability um because of the impact of the recent coronavirus pandemic. So um our revenues for sales tax or any revenues that are affected by the sales tax have been um reduced in this year's budgets or for fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, which includes not only general fund, but our special revenue funds such as Prop A, Prop C, we've got all the measures that are also sales tax um um based, so those have already been adjusted. And so for tonight, before I go any further, um we're recommending that council provide direction and on additions or deletions, so we have the one for the Sister City, we'll be deleting that expenditure and any um changes to the operating budget and CIP. We recommend that you adopt the the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one with the any with the revisions that we make tonight. And also, uh one thing that we have to do annually is to review and approve any updates to the general fund reserve classifications, and I'll go over that um in a few slides. So to um refresh your memory from the study session, currently, we're looking at fourteen point eight million dollar revenue with, of course, our expenditures at just under fourteen point eight million dollars and our one-time expenditure for the housing element thirty thousand dollars. That leaves us with a general fund surplus of just a little over forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Again, this is our pie chart regarding our revenues. As you can see, taxes um represent forty-one percent of the proposed budget. We've got our intergovernmental revenue, which is basically property taxes, so it's in lieu of the vehicle license fee we receive from the state. So what are the major changes of our revenues? Well, for increases, a seventeen and a half percent increase of about two hundred and twelve thousand, and as I mentioned at the study session, this is primarily because we're budgeting for the recreation programs as if they were operating a hundred percent uh moving forward for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, whi- which is um causing that two hundred thousand dollar increase. We have, again, the inner uh intergovernmental revenues of four point two percent of over two hundred thousand dollars. Property tax, which also ties in with um the property assessed valuations at two point nine percent with a hundred thousand dollars. So the these two um revenue sources come from the assessed valuation of the properties owned in the city of Temple City. And then we're looking at decreases in our fines and forfeitures only because we're not going to heavily enforce or sheriffs may not heavily enforce um any infractions as their focus is on um the covid um pandemic and the orders within. Um sales tax, as I mentioned, um we're looking at uh lower activities from our restaurants, which make up thirty-five percent of our sales tax revenues. So we're looking at almost an eight percent decrease of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Overall, um our operating revenue change is point nine percent, which is really flat. And and that's only a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Moving on to the general fund expenditures, we're looking at by function. As I've always mentioned, um every year, well, this is my second year, sorry, but um the public safety always takes the brunt of the the budget of every city. Um ours is a little bit lower, only because we don't have fire involved with it and that our contract with the uh the sheriffs keep it low. Um our general administration, you can see it's twenty-six percent. Um these are the general services we provide to our community to keep the city running. We've got community development, we've got community services and so forth. So in total, our general fund expenditures is fourteen point seven, fourteen million, seven and forty-one thousand dollars. And what are the major increases in our expenditures? Um again, to maintain services for our community, we need to also maintain our contract with the sheriffs. Um this is a six percent increase over last year of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And um the maintenance of effort, as I mentioned at the study session, this is uh we're reclassifying it and budgeting it over into our operating budget, just to ensure that we do budget for it every year. And it doesn't get dropped off, only because the SB funds that we use for our street maintenance um require that the city spend some of its monies in order to comply with the expenditures of the SB one funds. For major decreases, um again, I mentioned also that staff um did a lot of work in trying to determine what costs we can do without and possibly do more with our staff. You're looking at our professional contract services, aside from the sheriff's contract, a decrease of about twenty-seven percent or two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the other big um item that we've reduced, even though it shows it's only a five percent decrease, but it's almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, is due to the um not funding the vacant positions we currently have. So that's where the salary and benefit savings come from. Overall, our operating expenditure change is two percent. Um so the increase is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or if we reduce the eleven thousand from the Sister City, we're looking at two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase. And then the one-time expenditures, as mentioned, is the housing element update of thirty thousand dollars. Um this is a state mandated requirement and we cannot extend a deadline um past twenty twenty-one. Transfer out, as you recall, um the passage of the Senate Bill three twenty-four has came along at the right time for us. The three hundred eighty thousand dollar general fund subsidy is no longer needed as the revenues for ad balorum taxes can help offset any deficit the lighting and landscape district um will experience. So this is a big um savings for us here in the general fund. And then on the capital improvement side, we did not budget anything for the general fund, only the maintenance of effort. Um so that keeps our expenditures down. So in summary, the general fund, uh the proposed budget maintains our service levels. Um we are not proposing any layoffs. And we have a balanced budget, um it was forty-one thousand six thirty, but with the eleven thousand dollar reduction expenditures, we're looking at a fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollar um estimated surplus.
Okay, well, thank you for that, um.
Wait, oh, one more thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
The fund balance estimate, um this is something um you guys also um council needs to approve. So our estimated um beginning fund balance in July, which is in a few days, believe it or not, is a little over eighteen million dollars, eighteen million twenty-five thousand dollars. With the budget surplus of the fifty-two thousand six thirty, we're looking at an estimated budget uh fund balance of eighteen million seventy-seven thousand dollars, seven twenty-two. So the next slide shows us the fund balance classification. Um what we're recommending council to approve is that we maintain the three and a half million dollar committed for economic uncertainty. Maintain the ten million four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar for the assigned um amount for specific projects. And as you can see, facilities management, weight management, any technology replacement, economic development, and any one-time expenditures, we're proposing that we maintain those balances. Then our assigned becomes higher, though, so from the initial four point million sixty-nine thousand, our assigned amount will go up to four point million one hundred and twenty-two thousand and eighteen dollars. So this is something we'd like you to approve and consider, consider and approve, uh which is required annually through Gatsby um fifty-four.
Okay, thank you very much. So uh, Mr. Cook, do you have anything else to add, or does that uh conclude the reports?
Um there's a few more slides.
Just a couple, just a couple more slides, Mayor Chavez.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quickly.
No, no, I'm not trying to rush, I just wasn't sure if we were done yet.
And so any.
Couple more reviews.
Yeah, sorry, almost there. Um so our concern is the immediate effects of covid nineteen, of course, and again, as we've discussed, we'll keep you updated um on a quarterly basis or anything that happens um that significantly affects our um status. Uh the low interest incomes that we're earning now, um I've seen CDs that are earning point one five percent. Um the longer you you put it in, the less interest you earn, which I'm not sure I understand that. Um Lath is down.
It is supposed to be the other way around, I think.
It is, but for some reason, it's not. So what I've been doing is, as our CDs mature, I've been putting them into late, which is earning at this time, I believe, one point one five. I think the last time we spoke, I told you it was at one point two one or one point two three. But either way, it's still earning more than what the CDs would be earning in a short term. Um and then again, of course, the capris changes depending on their investment um returns. Um so if there are any changes they need to make an adjustment on, agencies won't feel that adjustment usually three years down the road. So there's a lag time of about three years before they um implement an a rate increase or I don't know if rate reductions have ever happened, but um it's a three-year lag. Then the last one, of course, is increasing contract service costs. Again, um for us to maintain services to our community, we will need to take a look and 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 increasing our costs for those services. And then quickly, the citywide summary, um we have a total of uh revenues, they're expecting a little over twenty-four million dollars and thirty million dollars in expenditure. Again, the difference of about six million will come from the current fund balance available in these special revenue funds. And uh again, these are restriction restricted funds, their revenues are specifically used for their purposes, and we can't use it for general fund or anything like that. And then CIP, uh we have an eleven point four million dollar budget that we're proposing to you. Um two main projects with the parks maintenance and facilities. And the other project would be mainly the street construction maintenance. Um you can see the carryover three point seven million, um the new budget's four point three million for the streets. And the two point nine um to five million for parks, two point nine of that is, as you're aware, the two point nine million dollar grant that staff worked on and was awarded by the state for us to build our Primrose, our new Primrose Park. So in details for the parks, these are some of the details, Live Oak Park Community Center improvements, the Primrose Park and parking lot, a conduit and wiring replacement in the city city yard front building on environmental assess assessment. The street construction maintenance, um here are the various projects specifically for streets construction. Um safe clean water, the pavement management, street surfacing is for residential streets. Um we have the sidewalk and curb ramps, the bridge repair and maintenance, less tuna's driver surfacing, um as Mr. Cook mentioned, um on the budget document, I omitted the um expenditures we've made this year, um to date, we've spent over four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the initial budget was for, the initial budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty was two point one eight eight million dollars. So we're carrying over about one point sixty-three million dollars um based on those expenditures um in year end. Remember, we had to spend um a certain amount of Prop C or we'll lose the the funds because of the expiration. Then we have the uh the Rosemary Boulevard, and we have the LED lighting that will come out from the lighting and landscape district. And this is to replace the bulbs on the lamps to make it more efficient. And again, this is our recommendations for council to take um action on and um open any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will begin with the council questions, I will go ahead and start with Councilmember Mann, do you have any questions of staff regarding the budget?
Uh thank you, Mayor Chavez, uh just a couple, hopefully, quick ones. Um can you remind us for the LED lighting from the landscape lighting district, is that will that cover the entire city or is that just one phase of a multi-year effort?
For right now, we don't have an engineer's estimate as to that, that was kind of, be honest, a round estimate, but we think that will cover two-thirds of the lighting, uh the the streetlights that are owned by the city.
Okay, thank you, and and I presume the bridge repair one is just the undercasing at Rosemary?
Yes, that is the contractual obligation we have with the county. Uh we've had it in there before, um we're carrying it over, they the um they told us they weren't able to complete it this year, so we'll make sure we carry it over for the next year until it's done. But we are contractually bound by them, or we would have to take on the obligation of hiring a contractor and making sure there was a certified uh structural engineers uh report on the integrity of the bridges in town.
Okay, thank you, and um earlier, uh when Councilmember Sternquist was uh talking about the crossing guards, um the funds that she was referring to that would would be gone in a couple years, are we referring to the traffic congestion relief fund?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, cause right right now, um I I think starting from last year, we had also used part of the gas tax to subsidize the crossing guards.
That's correct.
Okay, and then so right right now, it's a combination of those two, but like Councilmember Sternquist mentioned, it's it's gonna eventually, we're gonna eventually, i- it's no longer gonna be available at some point in the future.
That is correct, and then tha- that would be become a a obligation of the general fund.
Okay, got it. And um one, I guess my final question is, um I know our budget assumes that uh parks programming will continue as normal. Um a- and of course, we can't predict the future uh even even a couple of months from now, we we don't know what's gonna change, obviously, but um if if in the future, there was a hypothetically some level of reduction in parks programming or expenses, um how do you envision? Uh I guess from a from a budgetary standpoint as well as a a council standpoint, is that an item that will be brought back to council at a future point and say, hey, instead of using this money for programming, but can council decide to use it for something else, or is that not even a possibility? I'm just trying to understand if the money can be used for, say, I don't know, parks infrastructure or something like that?
That's a good question, Councilmember Mann, and the and and let me try to answer it in one way, and if I um tell me if this makes some sense, so the expenditures are tied to to revenue sources, but the revenue sources do not offset the overall costs of programming, so the general fund subsidizes implicitly the parks programming. I think you probably, at the next quarterly update, Mr. Matsumoto and I and Susan can come back and give you an idea of what that programming looks like, maybe what that looks like towards the overall budget, and does that create more of a surplus going forward? Uh is is kind of where we're at, we have that scenario kind of played out in our head. Uh but until we actually know what's happening, but that's what we will probably come back to you on the quarterly updates with.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions of staff at this time? Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions of staff at this time?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No, my brain's gonna explode.
Okay. It is, I know, it's uh about that time. Mayor Protemu, any questions?
Uh no questions as such, but I just wanna make a comment if I may. Um I think.
We're gonna get the comments, but go ahead.
Yeah, one of the fear increasing contract cost, um where right now our assumption is that decreases two hundred some thousand dollar. Contract cost that were made our general funds. And um so like I think a lot of the discussions been made, uh we need to keep monitoring it and see if the. Contract uh services start uh going back up. In other words, uh if if it does not meet our assumption of that reduction of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I would think that that's enough. Just a comment, thank you.
No, I think that's a point well made. I think we can expect services to. To start increasing as we will see over the next couple, three years, simply to try to recover from the losses that. Many of them experienced perhaps in the last few months, so I wouldn't be surprised. Okay, um I don't have any questions at this time, so I will open up uh our public hearing. I will ask. Our state clerk, if there are any public comment emails on this matter?
No, mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and please unmute the microphones if there's anybody out there in the public who wishes to comment verbally on this matter. Uh please do so now. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and we will now hear any final comments. Uh from the council members, I would probably ask that you maybe at this time focus, if any, on any. Potential additions or deletions from the proposed budget because I believe that's one of the things that. The staff is looking for direction on, so now is the time. So Councilmember uh Mann, I'll begin with you.
Uh thank you, Mayor Chavez. I just wanna s- uh start by saying and reiterating from our last budget meeting of the. Appreciation that I have for staff across the board for looking for a way to um make our budget whole. Uh and the numbers really do show that there was uh cuts and sacrifices made across the board. Um a lot of balancing here and there, so so I appreciate the the efforts. I know it's not. Easy given the unprecedented times we're we're going through. Um and I I think it it strikes me as a, I mean, we're we're blessed in many ways that we don't have to. Um deal with maybe some of the more drastic measures that other agencies have have taken. Um and I think we should, uh moving forward, we should stay vigilant and and I I know. Uh staff will continue to update us and bring us back um the situation as it continues to evolve. Uh and I I like to see um especially for any parts of our city operation or programming, that's a bit more. Unpredictable to uh maybe give us more frequent updates than than less updates. Um case in point, as Mr. Cook was saying, the things like parks programming, um and like what Mayor Protemu brought up contracting. Costs, um I would add to that, um capital improvement costs, if those can. Also swing wildly, uh depending on the time of the year and. The world economic situation, um I know we we have capital improvements uh budgeted for pavements and. Across, you know, the last four or five years, we've seen different pricings on that, um. Some projects we come out ahead, um who knows, one day we might actually have a project that um goes goes over the budget, um. I think we need to be kind of mentally prepared for for that possibility, because we don't know how to, we don't know how to guess that. Um and the sheriff's liability increase uh always worries me year by year. I know we don't have much control over that. Um I I'd be curious to see sort of the current county budget situation between the board and the sheriff's whether. That has further impacts on us, um as that continues to be, I know the board as. Mayor Putem, you mentioned uh Mr. Cook, their budget discussion, they're taking the step-by-step approach as well. Um as it evolves. Um as with regards to uh maybe additions or deletions like Mayor Chavez was referring to. Um you know, talking about the eleven thousand for the sister city, I was wondering if um council had. An appetite for um rebooting our citizens academy in some sort of virtual version. Uh I don't know if eleven thousand is gonna cover that, um I know it's not an item in there, but I know we've. Talked about it here and there at some point in the past. Uh I know, Mr. Cook, um we've talked about it on on several occasions and I know. Of course, the the effort to roll something out like that is um probably gonna be different than what we did back in, was it twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen? Um but to me, it just seems like one of those items that we've always wanted to do, but um given the current situation. Perhaps approaching it from a virtual standpoint, um. Could kind of fill in some of the gaps in po- programming that we potentially might might not have uh special at or. Well into the summertime, but that's very much something we could probably fill that in. Um I don't know if that's really a decision we can make right now, but um. That's what I would suggest is perhaps some sort of commitment to bring that back, um that we have it as a line item that. To me, that just provides a bit more accountability to uh seeing that through. So that that's one suggestion I would have for council. Um the other is, I know we've talked about. Neighborhood watch also going into some sort of form of virtual. Uh session, uh we talked about that in one of our previous um. Public safety law enforcement meetings with the with the sheriffs. Um so I I I think that's some of the programming that that um I personally would like to see see done, um but. That's up to council whether that really needs to be a line item or that can be accommodated with the budget as it is.
Um cr- cr- thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but don't we have a budget line item for neighborhood watch in this year's budget?
We do, yeah, it's it's sixty-five hundred dollars, I believe.
Okay, alright, yeah, like well, we'll save money on the tacos, but I don't know uh whether that'll offset them. Also, uh it's something to look into, I'm sure. Alright, thank you. Uh Councilmember Sternquist, any any last comments?
Um you know, just a couple, I was, I I think William's idea is definitely something to be explored, so maybe we can. Say we're gonna put that eleven thousand dollars into some pot to do something similar, whatever that might be. But um you know, it might. Be a good thing for us to just go back maybe. Four years or so, if not further, and put some of our neighborhood watches meetings that Jerry has taped. On our website and let people just revisit those, because we always have new people coming in and out of those meetings, but. Just my thought on that. Um.
Actually, I don't even think we need to go back that far, because if I'm correct, I think there were one or two that we actually. Conducted this year before we all went uh to stay at home. It wouldn't be a bad idea to probably re-show those.
Yeah, I think I think Jerry would be happy for us.
Well, I I think they're already on his website, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, I think they are, but to act, you know, just specifically say this is. Yeah, everybody can view them or put them all together so people can view after, you know, as they wish. Um you know, just thank you to everyone who had um played a part in preparing the budget. You know, one of the things I appreciate about this is that. You know, we have the opportunity to really take a look at things and. See how the budget is going to work with our strategic plan and um you know. Sometimes it's that thing, you know, you have something in front of you and and you take a look at it and. First time around, everything looks great and then you find things and I think. Um those things are always just ways for us to move forward and improve what we do. So um you know, I I really wanna let the staff and and Brian know that. Um I do appreciate all the effort that goes into preparing the budget. Again, I am just frustrated with the school issue because it was something that. You know, we worked so hard on just trying to to find a way that we could. Still support the school district, but maybe not as much and um. I think now that we're in a place where we have to be very careful about funding, like the school district, we just have to take really. You know, careful looks at the things that we're doing and. The processes that we have in place, but um that's it and I'm just grateful that um we have another. Great budget for the next fiscal year that's going to allow our. You know, workforce to continue without any um cuts or layoffs, so I'm very appreciative of that fact.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any last comments?
Yeah, I too would like to.
Has your head, has your head, uh you regained your head?
Yeah, I I plugged the hole.
Alright.
Um yeah, I thank you to all the staff for for all the work they've done and I guess I'm old and conservative and. As you guys were talking, I was sitting here thinking that. My approach is, okay, gotta think about everything we're doing in terms of quarters because of of what the. What the virus is doing to us and 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 I think we have to do careful reviews as we go along. I. I I think changes of one sort or another will probably be occurring. In in a quarterly fashion as we proceed through the through the year. Um so so I'm cautious and especially cautious about any new programs. And um and I worry about what's gonna happen with the staff. Are we gonna? Be able to continue with this budget through the year or or unforeseen things going to happen? But I I guess I'm just saying I wanna be cautious and and um and watch things closely.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Alright, so thank you. Uh Mayor Protemu, any final comments?
Um yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna echo what uh been said, especially Councilmember. Viscara, um I appreciate staff and. And the city leadership, city managers been uh and and uh had been able to put together such a great budget. Just looking at other municipalities, either they uh have uh surface cuts. Or like the county is uh has already announced today, the budget session, there will be layoffs at the county level. And we know other cities are facing the same thing, so I mean, I I think that um. Thank you to the um to staff and working with us uh with a conservative budget. Um I think the approach we have done is correct, that we have been able to keep our services. And uh be able to uh maintain our staff as well. But moving forward, I I agree with Councilmember Viscara that we need to be cautious. Is there a lot unknowns around the corner? Um like um the sheriff um contract, I know it's six percent, but. Moving forward, there might be other needs. For example, the supervisor uh or supervisor discussed today. That they want a certain cut in the uh sheriff's budget, so I don't know what that really meant. Uh what what they really mean to us in the long run. Um perhaps we can uh look at that in three months when we do our budget review, so um. I I I don't see any need to uh add or delete anything at this point.
Thank you.
Uh Vince, I have a question.
Yeah.
Vince?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
How how badly did the board punish uh the sheriffs today, you know?
Uh pretty bad, pretty bad. So and they're actually talking about, they were actually directing them to cut certain staff and uh in especially when it comes to custody.
Yeah, that can all trickle down to us.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Um well, I echo all that my colleagues have said uh thus far. I. Certainly wanna thank staff uh for all their hard work. This is what uh. What is this, Vince? Our tenth budget now or tenth or eleventh budget uh that we worked on together and uh. And all the rest of us who have been part of this for the last few years, uh I think it would be an understatement to say that this is easily. The most difficult and challenging of them all. And uh I like to be an optimist, but uh part of me says that uh we face more challenges in the near future. Um just a couple of comments, um first of all, excuse me. Uh I've been attending uh the League of California Cities, they're having a. What they would have been a mayor's and council members conference and we would have been in actually in Monterey. But rather than being in Monterey, I've been attending the conference in my living room online. Uh not quite the same, but uh they do have some good information and it called to mind and I just wanna recall. A statement made by William uh during our budget study session of how it's important that the budget should reflect uh. Council priorities and be consistent, of course, with our future master plans and. And um and that was that was the message certainly that they were sending as well, not to forget that uh. That that's what budgets should focus on, yet however with the uh um condition, of course, that. You know, and it's been mentioned a few times, we are in very unique times. Uh and that is uh, you know, many of the things that are happening now, none of us would have ever imagined it, so. Unfortunately, we have to adapt to that, but keep in mind that, and I think staff has done a good job of keeping those priorities in mind. And I think uh staff has heard the message that we certainly wanna keep up to date on those and I think they're willing to do that. Um interesting, uh William, also that you mentioned the citizens academy, you know, that uh that is something that uh. Um you know, years ago, we we began and uh uh it was a, it was a great program. It. Fell off by the wayside for any number of reasons and that was on my to-do list as the mayor this year was. To get that citizens academy academy back up, but unfortunately, uh something else took precedent and uh. But I'm glad you mentioned it and I would additionally agree that maybe that's something that we can look at from a virtual standpoint. Um in in the near future as well. Uh lastly, and bottom line for me is that. Um the three most important parts of this budget is what Susan uh indicated at the very beginning. We we are maintaining our city services, no layoffs, and we have a balanced budget. Those three things, I think alone, um not many cities can say that these days. And uh and for us to come up with that and to meet those goals certainly is a feather in our cap. And feather in the cap of all of those who are involved, from our employees to our staff, to city council. Um to all of our contractors, everyone that we work with, so uh you know, it 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 takes a. Of of cooperation of many people to put something like this together, so so I wanna thank all of you for for doing that. So uh with that, um I do agree with the additions and deletions that have already previously been. Discussed, so I don't have anything further, so I guess at this time, unless there are any. Further comments, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Who would like to take a shot at that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve um. Resolution number twenty fifty-four seventy-nine, adopting the budget and and appro- and approving. Appropriations for the state of Temple City for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Um do we need uh anything added to that regarding um any of the revisions or uh. Uh other things that we've talked about this evening, uh I think the staff has heard the direction, but should that be part of the motion?
We probably need to add that, Mr. Mayor, and as um suggested, uh amendment suggested by Mr. Cook.
Okay, okay, do we have a second?
I did, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilmember Viscara. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any objection? Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemu?
Uh yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Right, that uh motion unanimously passes. We will now move on to item number six, and that is our new business overview of temporary emergency action. Related to continuity of city services and personnel. related to continuity of city services and personnel and request for direction. So, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Um, you've seen this item many times before. Um, this would continue our admin leave policy till August tenth. Um, this is really the way operations are allowed, are, we are allowing for operations to run forward. Um, you do remember that um our, for our rec leaders and senior rec leaders, we did end the admin leave policy um as of uh June twentieth. Um, and they will be working on a hourly basis based on the hours worked. Um, the, again, the fiscal impact is not a budgetary impact or a dollars going out the door impact. That would be essentially if all leave was used, the cumulative value of that leave at the end of the year in terms of a liability, not necessarily something that would be expended. So, just to make that clear, but for transparency purposes, that's why we have those numbers there for you and for the public to see more for transparency sur- purposes and not an, an additional expenditure of funds.
That concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alright, so uh we will start off with council questions. Uh, now, uh, Mayor, I'll start with Mayor Protemu. Any questions of staff?
Uh, no question. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Viscara, any questions?
No questions.
Council member Sternquist?
Okay, um, just one. I, I I forgot, but I was good. I wanted to ask Brian if he could just update us on um, the technology aspect of working from home. Um, there is just a lot of um, I guess, information out that it working from home provides uh a portal of opportunities for scams and Brian has some things in place. Brian, would you share that? The council?
Most certainly, uh, council member Sternquist, happy to. Um, and credit goes to staff. This does not go to me. It goes to Susan, it goes to everybody else, it goes to Bray IT. Um, we were, we moved most, about ninety percent of our applications to the cloud, including the manner in which I'm talking to you now, our email system and others, and one of which just moved over to the cloud very recently. So, the bigger concern for smaller municipalities were having uh servers that were in-house, that were maintained by city staff or contractors, where they would get either proprietary information either through a payroll system or other things like that, where those scams that council member Sternquist is mentioning uh, would get through. Is any system foolproof? No. Is the system on the cloud foolproof? No, it is not, but it provides a small municipality like ours the ability to work offsite, the ability to have uh the vast majority of our, of our workforce who needs to be uh, working offsite minus our field crews to be able to do that. And so, um minus one application at this point, we've been able to utilize uh cloud-based services to really assist us in doing the internal operations that we need to do from permitting to our financial system to others that, uh, if this had happened a year ago, to be quite frank with you, uh, we would probably not have been in the position we were uh, in, in March with the state of Elm Orta. We would have been quite honestly scrambling a lot more than we were because of what council member Sternquist is saying, we would have had some vulnerabilities that we would have had to address on the fly. Um, and not that we haven't had to address some issues on the fly a bit, but we were much more prepared and that was, again, a credit to Susan, all of the directors as well, our Parks and Recreation Services modules are also on the cloud as well. And um, all credit to them and staff as well, and also having the equipment ready for people to be able to utilize. So, that's a quick non-tech summary. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, before I get to uh council member Mann, I just a quick follow-up to uh, council member Sternquist's question that's kind of related to this. Since we are pretty much relying on remote and uh doing all these types of things, have we provided or do we need to provide any tutorials for employees of how to use this? You know, how do we do this remotely? How do we do different things? Is, is there have been any uh discussion or any requests for any of that kind of, of uh help?
I think it's, I've been on an ad needed basis. We were going to do something to the phone system recently. Uh, but because of some uh work happening at the library and also too with the vendor itself, we've delayed that. So yes, we have been and there's actually going to be something related to our phone system that we'll be giving a tutorial with soon as well.
Okay, good, because I, I know that uh, you know, from PCC, you know, they've given us a lot of assistance on, on getting up to speed on, on this new world we live in and uh, I'm sure there's a lot of people like me out there that uh you know, could use a refresher course on a lot of this different stuff, so.
So, staff is teaching, staff is teaching me more than staff is self-learning themselves, so.
I've, I've learned more about computers in the last month than I've ever wanted to know in my entire life, I think. Okay, so um, uh, council member Mann?
Uh, just one quick question. Is there anything significant about the um, the August date noted in the staff report?
It was initially when we were going to talk about phase one, but um, that may, that may obviously change as well with what's happening. So um, there wasn't any, it was, it was sort of arbitrary, so, but well, but also too, I know that the council wants to check in with this program and these efforts every month or so, so that's what we thought was a better date.
Okay, and, and I guess um, should we expect that uh, this will continue till the, the county reaches the stage five where everyone's back to work?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now open up public comment. Uh, we'll begin by asking our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and if you don't mind uh unmuting the microphones, is there anybody in the public uh listening in wish to verbally comment on this matter?
There are no public callers.
Thank you. Okay, then I will close public comments. And now we will take any final council questions and/or comments. Council member Mann?
Yeah, I, I think all, all I'll say is um, since you know, we, we keep talking about, you know, when will this COVID nineteen crisis end? And now we're getting news that there's cases all over the country, you know, the county record in- increases of new confirmed cases, so um I, I just want to say to you two staff, I appreciate them for kind of just going with the flow because there's really no other way to do it. Um, so, so thank you, appreciate you, everyone trying to adapt as we go. I don't thank you.
Thank you. Council member Sternquist?
Um, just did what William said. Thank you to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Council member Viscara, any final comments?
Uh, the same diddle.
Alright, thank you. Mayor Protemu?
Uh, same, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll make a unanimous, uh, you know, I think uh a lot of thank yous to everybody. I mean, that's uh, none of us are in this together. I mean, excuse me, none of us are in this alone. We're all together. You know what I meant. Uh, and uh, and we are proof that, that together we will get through this uh somehow, some way and sometime, hopefully soon, sooner than later. But uh, you know, I think from where we started three months ago to where we are now, uh, I would say that we have uh, we have adapted, if, if not, uh, if not anything else, uh. And um, hopefully we will improve from there, so. So thank you, everyone, for this evening. Thanks to all the hard work that everyone put in. So I will entertain a motion on this last matter before us?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I will move to um direct the city manager to continue paying administrative leave uh for all employees excluding senior rec leaders and rec um, and recreation leaders um, for a period from July first to August tenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council member Mann?
Yes.
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Council member Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay. Alright, well, that concludes our business for the evening. I want to thank everyone for your attendance and your help. Uh, it was a good meeting and uh, uh, you know, great job by everyone involved. So thank you. Stay safe out there. Have a good week and uh we are adjourned. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good night.
Thank you.